There is something, I don't know how to specifically get into saying where those go. Even if that's all through a prioritization thing, it's separate from us. So even if funds are allocated sidewalk infrastructure, it's true that. Cause I'm trying to remember which, which one is ahead of that in Fry Springs. There's another project in Fry Springs that was prioritized ahead of Stripling. Oh, another bridge to go about. I'm not sure if that's the same funding stream back. I'm not sure, I mean, they'll be up to it.
We have a lot of things discussed.
Yeah, but I'm just not sure that through that granularity that we would get into that. I mean, obviously we might be talking about allocation of money towards sidewalk infrastructure, but then specific projects that goes to, depending on the scale of it, may be determined elsewhere. And in a different, like the market, and there's a lot of prioritization happening within each neighborhood. And that's just for my own, you know, but it's something that won't be, you know, the public. My reason is, I'm not sure how this will really, really discussion, I don't know.
So did you have a nice lunch?
Mm-hmm.
I had a nice lunch today.
Nice.
Hey, Brian. Are these live?
I learned that lesson the last time. When I went back to go, we were doing, listening to a quote from someone else. I just put an angry beginning and I was, oh, you should chit-chatting away.
See that E? Hi. Pretty nice.
I'll say that I watched our last work session in here. It was really easy to follow. Even, even the people who weren't at the mic, you know, that was.
Oh, really? Cause I haven't checked those yet. Oh, that's nice to know.
Yeah, I just went back to get a quote from somebody and I was like, wow, this is really.
It's gonna say it pays to have a professional paid the love that they deserve.
My.
You have options.
I pulled that out. See? This was on my mind. I had, she's like, well, why do you pull that stuff up like?
Because we need it.
Pull all what stuff?
Like, she's like, well, why do you organize the personnel list like that? Why don't we just have one and you just sort it and do this? I'm like, because it's so much easier to pull it out.
These fancy new devices that brown people have bought?
Yes.
Are you actually monitoring his programs?
Not really.
Connect to try. Okay, watch what you say over there.
That's a lot.
Very live.
Hot mic.
Oh, I didn't say live. I just said it's a lot, you know.
Here we go. Thank you, since I'm pushing back a little bit to make sure that we've really got it all, our funding options. Because the last thing I want to do is let other things get deprioritized because other projects. I mean, every funding source, they all want them.
No, I mean, I think. I had to, you talked in.
Well, do. It's not exactly a capacity crowd.
No, it isn't.
Of council. Mike's here. He was meeting with the chief in time.
Looking at the benefit program specials?
The what?
Benefit program specials.
No, it's not the same thing.
All right, then I need to get down to this call center. Okay, okay, those questions were.
And I have it.
Yep, that's exactly where it is.
Did Grant tell you about Mr. Brad?
Okay.
Forty-four.
What, he told me though.
What was the last?
Forty, forty-four.
There is some.
Four, forty-four even?
Uh, it's like forty-four, one thirty-seven. Split it, the last one up now. Just tell you. Mike, just tell us, those are the prospecting family services that. Yeah. Forty-four, one thirty.
Yep. And I'll use that title just so it doesn't get turned into something else.
Right.
There's no space there. I know that. I grew up two blocks.
Send you the article, but it was.
Actually, when that cheesecake factory came in, this was the beginning and the end of old, of old Arlington.
Of old Arlington.
Yeah, because what they did is they.
Stop it sitting together.
I know.
Right across the street from there, it used to be a Sears parking lot, this is forty years ago. It was like, it was like the least activated, least cheesecake factory area you could possibly have. And we still see that as new. That's, that's really funny.
Do you, uh, do you remember, I used to date a girl.
Sure. Did you ever go to Galaxy Hut?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the one, like, readout. Cool, old. I don't know. That's that kind of, that music that was native to DC, it's called, um.
Oh, yeah.
Not the. Gogo, Gogo was a DC institute.
But yeah, I remember the Sunday brunch.
I'll send this to you.
Yeah, so I grew up literally too.
I mean, if you want to write these down or upload them to the.
My elementary school was right down there. And it all just, it's changed so.
Good evening. Call this meeting to order. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mike Murphy.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're going to give another look at the FY twenty twenty budget as it continues to be developed. And maybe a little bit different than years past, we'll be taking a deeper dive on the CIP with council before it's presented to the planning commission. It's been of particular importance in this year where council has expressed some clear priorities, particularly around redevelopment and affordable housing. And so I think it's appropriate that we spend that additional time before that draft is finalized by our office and goes to the planning commission for review on the eighteenth. I would say that, you know, regardless of where we are and when that draft goes forward, it remains a draft, right? As we move through the budget process, which is only truly finalized in April with your vote. There's a considerable amount of touchpoints along the way and budget work sessions and public hearings. And we are not all the way there on our revenue forecast yet. And, and so there, there is the matter of how you pay for some of the decisions along the way. So I'll turn over the first part of our presentation to Ms. Leslie Beauregard.
So I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly. This is the agenda that you've been looking at. Here's some of the key dates. So Mr. Murphy mentioned that on December eighteenth, the planning commission will discuss the capital improvement program in a work session. January eighth, they'll actually have the public hearing. And so if anything happens tonight, we have some time to adjust the CIP. It goes out next week to the planning commission. On March fourth, that is the Monday that the proposed budget is presented by the city and the schools present their budget that night as well to city council and the public. We have our first public hearing on the tax rate and the budget on the eighteenth of March. April first, April Fool's Day is the second budget public hearing and it'll also be the first, oh, what just happened? That's not good.
There we are.
Okay. And then the final budget adoption in second reading won't be on April ninth. Here are the work sessions we have scheduled. I think the January eleventh, I'm calling it a mini retreat because it's only a couple hours one morning. On January eleventh, which is still tentative, I believe. We have a budget work session on the thirty-first scheduled and then we have our regular work sessions after the budget's presented. We have four of those scheduled, including a community budget form on the twenty-seventh to round out the budget cycle. And all these are on our website at www charlottesville.org/budget.
So the outside agencies, one will still happen as normal?
Uh, we have the contractual agencies to talk about. It'll be shorter, obviously, but we do have a handful of agencies at the budget office rule review. And we just, we may, we could probably combine that with something else.
I was wondering if we could fold it in.
We can fold it in, sure. Yeah, we can definitely do that, so. Okay, here we go. So I did want to quickly go over the budget guidelines. These are, you look at these every year. Sometimes they change. Usually they don't change, though. So just wanted to quickly go over these with you all. The first one, we did change a couple of years ago to annually review major local tax rates. I know we're going to talk about that later in the presentation. We're going to talk about revenue as it relates to where the budget is right now. Developing operational budgets within revenues, that basically means we'll present you with a balanced budget. Focus on your strategic plan goals. Here are the five goals as they stand right now in the strategic plan. And if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. The next one is also related to the strategic plan as it relates to performance measures. And each year, we're trying to do better and better at how we align the strategic plan with the annual budget. So we'll continue to do that as well. The next one is in red because this one we typically haven't really kept with exactly. Usually the schools have received more than the forty percent target. And so I'm only highlighting it in red. I actually don't know what the schools are requesting at the moment and I'll be reaching out to them soon to see if they have any idea and they can give us any type of update on that. So as we get further into the budget, we'll see where they land with that. The next one is related to paying benefits and support for employees. And we'll, we will be talking about compensation and some of the issues that we're seeing as we go into twenty, fiscal year twenty. The next one, in addition, has to do with the living wage ordinance. And all that means is that any contracts that we go into, they also have to pay that same wage, which right now we're planning to increase to fifteen dollars for fiscal year twenty. The next one is not to fund any programs without corresponding or offsetting with revenues and expenditures. And again, I think this just goes to that we do need to present to you in a balanced budget. And if we have to, if there are additions to the budget, we should try to figure out a way to make those choices and maybe not everything can be done in the budget. And so this goes to making what those choices might be. Number nine is, basically speaks to the city's infrastructure and creating those opportunities to invest in the future of the city. The tenth one is crossed out. We're not doing an agency budget review team process this year. So that one is not, does not apply for this next year's budget. And we'll talk in more detail about the number, this next one, eleven, in terms of the general fund transfer to the capital improvement program. We'll be showing you some charts related to that. Council has a strategic initiatives account that we try to invest in every year. And we do discuss that during our budget work sessions after the budget's presented. We also have a fund balance target to make sure that we meet our seventeen percent. And you heard about this most recently when we did the year-end appropriation. Okay, so that's, that's it for the budget guidelines. And the next slide.
Excuse me, Leslie, is this a time to, if you have any ideas for a different or new budget guideline to bring it up or?
Sure.
And I, I do feel like I need to bring this up because on November fourteen, I, I did meet, I gave a presentation with the Housing Advisory Committee. And it was based on a memo that I had written back in August twenty eighteen with some ideas about how to expand and fund housing programs. And the idea was to come up with a, a way to provide a sustainable funding stream to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, the CAF. And it was kind of inspired by the, the way we have dedicated funds for the, the school, the school division. Where they base a certain percentage of new city real estate and property tax revenue to the schools. The proposal that I had floated out there and I sent it to council and I talked about it with Hack was to kind of continue the city's strong commitment to inclusion and diversity by dedicating a certain percentage of revenue from growth corridors to directly into the CAF. So as I've been told by Anita Morrison from the Partners for Economic Solutions, that's called a synthetic TIF. But it would be based on the increment of change of the real estate and property tax revenue. So it, the, the, the idea that I proposed and floated to the Housing Advisory Committee was that we would take thirty percent of the differential from our growth corridors. The biggest growth corridors are West Main Street, increasingly Preston, Water Street, and then Emmett. And that that would be, it, it wouldn't be citywide, so it wouldn't be taking all the revenue change, but it would be harnessing the growth of those growth corridors and earmarking a certain percentage of that into the housing fund. And that was also to show an ongoing continual commitment, not being so totally dependent on these ad hoc special use permits that actually only give one-time money. This would be annually going into the fund. So, and my colleagues need to talk about that, think about it, ponder it. But the Housing Advisory Committee that I presented to, the policy committee, did endorse this. They thought it was a good idea. So I went to them first because they are our policy advisors. So I don't know what.
But we would still need to have a work session or something to figure, to get all the information, right?
It's a, it's a policy. I mean, there's, yeah, we can look at data. I can show some things that I showed them. But I wanted to get, get it out there tonight since this is the first time we looked at our budget items, our budget guidelines.
I, I, I would say, I imagine that they viewed that as additive, right? To what your current allocations are, right? So it sounded attractive. And so, you know, I would say that if we look at, and first of all, we can only capture the revenue dollar one time, right? So that means that we're taking away from other priorities. But I would also keep in mind that previous CIP, the one that we're in right now, dedicates twenty million dollars to affordable housing, which would dwarf any thirty percent carve-out from new revenues in any given year significantly. And the draft, and we'll talk about whether it's an affordable draft or not, based on your priorities tonight. There's another slide. I don't want to, you know, steal the drama for later. But I mean, there's thirty-two and a half million dollars in affordable housing in this draft right now. So I, I don't know that we're not already going well beyond what that mechanism would create.
Again, I mean, this was, this was inspired by the Columbia Pike example in Arlington, where that was specifically used as a way to create revenue streams to cover the debt service of bonds. And it was, but it was in a housing fund. It wasn't an actual TIF. It was, it was a budget policy item. But it was established and revisited every year by the council or the board of supervisors, wherever the elected body is. So I, I just, it's something that I'd be, I'd be interested in, in, in keeping on the table. Not, there's no decision to make tonight and we can talk more about it. But, and I'll, and, and this was floated actually a year ago, over a year ago. And, and we've been bantering it about for some time. So, yeah, the point's well taken, Mr.
Yeah, I, I think staff certainly prepared to go deeper at council's direction. I mean, I'm not going to put Mr. Engel on the spot for tonight, but if, if there's a request, you know, we have, we have done a little bit of the preliminary work on this, for sure.
Okay, so the last slide I'm doing for now are the long-term financial policies. And some of these we'll be talking about a little bit later in the presentation as well. And I talked a little bit about, the previous slide alluded to long-term financial policy number one and two, and that's our seventeen percent fund balance. In addition, we have to, we want to maintain sufficient working capital in our utilities funds. We want to obviously stabilize all non-general funds. We have a lot of funds other than the general fund to make sure they all have a positive fund balance. This, number five, we'll talk about at more length. This is fairly new, it was a couple, it was up a couple of years ago, where council increased the limit and the target. And then we have one cent of the meals tax dedicated to the debt service fund. And so if there are no questions about these, I'm actually going to pass it to Ryan, who's now going to walk through a high-level summary of the draft CIP as it stands right now.
Thanks, thanks, Leslie. As Leslie said, and as Mike said, we're kind of doing this a little bit different. So we weren't planning on going through, as we do in our normal CIP work session, project by project, line by line, and looking at it, but more of a higher-level draft summary view. And, you know, we'll look at some of the strategies we used to craft this first draft and then we'll look at each category within the CIP, education, facilities, public safety, those kind of things and get, look at that at a higher summary view. And then we'll move on to our discussion on the affordability of that after we get through the details here. So here's kind of the overview. For FY twenty, we're looking at about thirty-four point two million in proposed projects and a hundred and twenty-four point five over the five-year period. In many ways, this is, this is aggressive and it's kind of, is the highest five-year total we've had since I have been with the city. So this is, as we said, this is kind of a draft of where we stand. But also wanted to point out, there is still, even with this level of the CIP, there's still almost a hundred and ten million dollars worth of unfunded requests from the departments that we, were unable to work into the, this draft. Some of the strategies that we looked at when we were trying to put together this proposed CIP, we looked at reprogramming almost two million dollars worth of existing balances to reduce what was going to be necessary and new bonds for FY twenty. In a few instances, we were able to reduce projects to allow for the, the spin-down of existing balances. One of the areas that I'd like to pick on and point out is the, the bridge inspections. And we had several years' worth of funding built in that and we, we talked with NDS and they said, yes, let us go ahead and use these first, zero out these first couple of years to spin that balance down and then we can pick that back up. But they said, you know, with those balances, we have sufficient. And we did that in several cases throughout the CIP. We reallocated Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund projected amounts to assist with the funding of the, the public housing redevelopment. We have a slide on affordable housing. We'll talk, talk more about that when we get there. Reduced the inflationary factors. We had built in some inflationary factors on some construction-related projects that, that were recurring over the years that probably need to be, just be looked at and adjusted each year and not just given an arbitrary inflationary figure moving out, but really looked at on a case-by-case, year-by-year basis, whether or not that's appropriate. So we reduced those. One thing that was, one of our goals was to make sure that we were taking care of what we already have in terms of infrastructure and balance that with our other needs in the CIP. So we want to make sure we maintain the funding for the, for the existing city infrastructure, city and school facilities, streets, sidewalks, playgrounds, trees, those kind of things. So we want to make sure we had, had some, you know, maintained some level of funding for those. And then finally, as part of the FY eighteen year-end appropriation, we are programming approximately three point two, as of right now, three point two million dollars in the year-end fund balance towards affordable housing redevelopment. As we start to go through, schools over the five-year period, the dollar amounts, I wanted to point out on these slides, the dollar amounts that are showing are the five-year total for these projects, not the, the one-year, the total. So the five-year total for schools is just under nineteen million dollars in this five-year draft. And some of the, the larger projects are the CCS priority improvements, which is their modernization dollars that they've been using, added some funds for HVAC. CHS roof replacement is coming up here in a couple of years that we need to, to deal with. So those are just a couple of the high-level.
And this is in addition to the forty percent or higher?
This is on the capital side? The forty percent is just the operating side?
Just, mhm. That is correct, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
City facilities, we're looking at approximately seven and a half million over the five-year period, between our lump sum to do the, the major maintenance and our city's HVAC. We're also looking at a funding for an energy performance audit to look at where we could possibly use our, our city facility dollars to go ahead and, excuse me, go ahead and look at some energy efficiencies and get more out of our, our money there. Public safety, twelve point two million or just under twelve point three million.
Excuse me, Ryan, just a, a quick question about the city facilities. And this is something that Mr. Murphy and I talked about. Is this the area that you would put any revenue or, I mean, resources to do a facilities assessment? Talk about facilities needs assessment for the city properties? Is that a, I would think that would come out of a capital.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Is that baked in here somewhere or no?
Typically, in the, in the past, and I don't know if any of the public work folks are here, but typically, excuse me, typically in the past when we've done these facilities needs assessments, they have used the, the first project here, the city facilities lump sum and worked that into their lump sum and, and used, and used those dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, public safety. First one, as we announced on Monday, there's the General District Court facility. I wanted to point out, this says six point three million. We, we were talking about six point eight million. But we also had five hundred thousand dollars that was programmed from a previous CIP that gets us to that six point eight million dollar figure. So no, we're not shorting the deal we made, the deal we announced on Monday. We already had some funding, previous funding existing in there for that. And some additional funds for the, for the bypass fire station to renovate that and some replacement of our aging fire fleet. Next is the transportation and access. This is where we have our streets and our sidewalks and West Main. We have the future parking structure also associated with the, you know, the courts announcement that, in there. We have ten million dollars for that. And so these are some of the sources in, you know, continuing to upgrade our ADA ramps, sidewalks, signalization, all that was important. We want to make sure we had funding in to do that as well. And a million dollars for bicycle infrastructure.
Do these break, break down per year?
We have, yes.
Okay.
And the numbers for the new sidewalk infrastructure and the ADA upgrades and then the bicycle infrastructure, are those consistent with what you've had previously forecasted or is there any additional?
There's a little bit of additional fund. Um, there's a little bit of additional funding in each of those items.
Anything notable, just to know it shifted?
I mean, there were not massive changes on any one of those items. I mean, we, we did add some additional funding for some, to, to fix some ADA curb ramps. But that was, that was probably the, the largest increase was on the ADA curb ramp area of the city.
And we've been receiving an awful lot of email about Elliott Street. Is, is Elliott Street in here?
No.
So that's a, is that a separate, that's going to be a separate item at some point?
That's not in our current draft at this point.
But is there a number somewhere?
Of what that would cost, one point two billion?
Tony, one point two, yeah, one point two.
And then similarly, the Greenbrier connectivity, what's the amount on that? I know there's like a bridge, and then there's.
That's, yeah, that is the, the, are we talking about the trail?
We're trying to encircle all of.
Talking about the tunnel?
The tunnel, there's a tunnel, sorry, there's a tunnel, and then there's just, just the trailway infrastructure that's a separate piece for continuity, that some, most of it falls on our world.
I'll touch on the trail piece on the, I believe it's the next slide, and then, but the, the tunnel will show up on the, on the unfunded list. And one thing I did want to point out is, even though you see dollars associated with all of these items and some of the previous slides, a lot of these items are also showing up on the unfunded list because we, you know, we were unable to get all the way there on the full request from the departments for certain projects. But we wanted to, you know, in most cases, we want to make sure we were maintaining the level we were at and trying to increase where, where we could for these items. But again, there was an extensive unfunded list, and some of these will, as we move along, you'll see some of these showing up on the slides.
So, back a couple of slides, I think Ryan said, what, a hundred and nine and a half million dollars in unfunded requests?
So Elliott Street's in there?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Parks and Recreation, we're looking at four point three over the five years. And one thing we did differently, that, that we're proposing to do differently is that first item, the Parkland and Trails acquisition and development. We, previously, we'd had those separated out at about a hundred thousand dollars apiece in each of those. And we combined those and increased the funding a little bit and to allow parks to prioritize with those dollars what is the most important, whether it's parkland, whether it's trails, and not kind of, and, and try, hopefully give them some flexibility. I know it doesn't get them all the way there to what they want, but hopefully that would give them a little more flexibility to be able to move through, through their list of trails and parkland acquisition areas a little bit quicker. So that was one thing we wanted to point out. And the other new item on here is downtown mall infrastructure repairs. Previously, we didn't have a, a category project for this, or, and a dedicated source. And this provides us with a dedicated source to fund these, these improvements. There's lots of improvements, and this will help us start to work on that and make sure we're maintaining the mall, and we don't run into a larger bill of having to just flat-out replace things en masse down the road.
What's the scope of those things? Like, there's obviously the surfaces.
I'll, I'll let Ryan speak to that.
I have a quick question while he's going. How much were we spending previously on, even though there wasn't a designated fund, we were doing some?
You could answer that.
Answer that, okay.
It's on for the people at home, so yes.
Oh, okay. The funding would be used for repairs to masonry, or areas of subsidence in the brick due to utility lines, light fixtures, fountains, pumps that service the fountains, electrical repairs, et cetera.
Planters, plantings, furnishings?
No, not necessarily. The planters are wrought iron and very heavy and sturdy. We paint them once a year. It would also allow us to do, get some money to begin to figure out how are we going to fix the vehicular crossings on the mall, where they have failed, both in the, both in the granite bands and the brick, fields of brick. In the past, we have basically absorbed this through our operating budget in Parks and Recreation and the Parks Division on our maintenance side, where we've needed to expend money for new light poles or ones that have gotten backed into by a truck or something like that. That's where we have paid for those things. So this will allow not only Parks and Recreation, but some other departments to have a dedicated source of funding to team together and solve some of these problems.
But the dollars of what you've needed historically are kind of in line with what's being projected here? Or is this in maybe a more robust estimation that can do? I'm just trying to understand, like, how this compares to what it's been historically?
Well, there has not been anything historic.
So in terms of how much has been spent, when you did the operational budget?
This is significantly more than anything we would have ever have spent operationally.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Still have, again, maintaining, the maintenance of our parks and our school playgrounds, tree plantings, and some restroom refurbishment as well. Other capital projects, it's about three, three and a half million dollars over the five years. And, and some of these include, like, our contribution to the senior center at Belvedere, the Home Energy Conservation Grant Program, economic development, strategic initiatives that we, we fund on an annual basis.
But the IT, is that talking about throughout the community?
This is more dealing with the city's needs.
Internal, yeah, I understand, okay, thank you.
Which could alter, I mean, depending, it would, could benefit large, you know, speaking like the Wi-Fi in the mall, and there's some infrastructure that we could do that would definitely benefit, but it's mostly our internal infrastructures, yeah.
Affordable housing, I'm going to let Mike take over on this slide. But as he said before, we have about thirty-two and a half million over the five-year period here for affordable housing.
You sure you don't want to keep going?
I'll, I'll, I'll let you jump in here.
So, we've talked a little bit about this recently. You know, we had CRHA and PHA in this room not so long ago, and we talked about some of these investments, and was there a possibility of going a little deeper? And in some cases, we have, and in others, we haven't, so we'll talk a little bit about that. So, public housing redevelopment, we have programmed in right now at fifteen million. Friendship Court infrastructure improvements at six point one-two, which is what the request was. You know, we did some work with the year end, and one of the requests was, how do we look at the numbers in phase one for Friendship Court? They showed you a gap of somewhere between three point seven and five point two. We did our best to hit the middle of that, so. You know, traditionally, there's been this line item for the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. And when we boil it down to, you know, what that fund has gone towards, and you're developing new units, you know, oftentimes, you know, those new units, I would say, we're proposing in this budget, you're prioritizing that the new units are going to come from the Housing Authority and Friendship Court right now. And that brings us back to what are the other commitments in that fund? One, you know, you've just started, you're in the first year of a supplemental rental assistance program. I could tell you from a lot of experience, there's no best practice in rental assistance that says that you don't support people for up to twenty-four months. And even in the way the dollars have been dispersed in digging into that since our last meeting, I think we've probably put out more money than we should have in the year that we're in because we're only really ensuring people bridge that gap for about sixteen months. So I'd want to be careful about that going forward. But that said, I think you need to continue that commitment. So this four and a half million is a nine hundred thousand dollar number in each of the five years of the CIP. And I think, you know, in any system, you have to address a problem at both ends. And there is the matter of rehabilitation for the simple purpose of, how do you keep people from leaving the affordable housing stock? And so this is just a half a million dollars in each of the years towards housing rehabilitation in whatever form that would take. Go ahead. So, you know, the overall in this, particularly in this affordable housing arena, I think we have a number of considerations. I, I know that we were at fifteen million last week, and you say, oh, well, you didn't increase that number. And so why is that? You know, first of all, we are at a point, and we'll talk about affordability later in this presentation, where we are getting to the point where we exceed what the cash available is. And there are a lot of other priorities, including our people, that we'll talk about, that are not covered yet in the operational side of the budget. And, and we need to give you a budget where we're being good stewards of the money. I think the other factor is, in the presentation we had from the Housing Authority, we, first of all, didn't have an announcement yet about a five million dollar gift. And I believe that there will be other significant philanthropy to follow that. I think also, we've learned in the next week or two through meetings that the redevelopment committee is having, and in discussions with the developer, that Avon Levy, which was presented to us as a priority in the first three projects, is maybe not one of the first three projects anymore. So with a lack of certainty about what the priorities are, and, and knowing where the goalposts are, I think that fifteen and a minimum of five million dollars, twenty million dollars, as, remember, we're approving a five-year plan, but you're approving one year's worth of budget. And I feel pretty confident that there's more than enough budget out there to handle South First Street Ball Field and Crescent Halls as we move into this next cycle, particularly for where they are in their planning processes. You know, I think for, for the staff to really do their best to accurately reflect what we've heard as a community and council priority on affordable housing is only one half of the equation. And the other half is, what assurances do you have about those investments, right? I think at the last meeting, Mr. Signer talked about, you know, is there an MOU, right? Like, you know, first, there is the, the gathering of the information, figuring out what the dollars are, right? Or what the dollars might be. And then there's the matter of, like, what are, what are the, what is the agreement that you make with the entities? And, you know, I think that there's a couple of key considerations that need to be made as you make these appropriations. One is, how are we involved in the planning process, right? What, what is the council or the city staff, how will you be involved either about decision-making or about the disbursement of funds when it comes? Is there a seat at the table, you know? And that could take any number of forms. It may just be an MOU. Is there a situation where you would think about expanding the board of the Housing Authority to add people from the city? Is there a place where you would say, you know, there have been times where council has been the board? I mean, that's an extreme circumstance, but, you know, there are many ways that you need to look at the possibilities that are out there. Or is there really just a intermediary group that acts with city staff and housing authority staff and board members and residents to talk about, you know, what the path of the redevelopment is? And then finally, you know, in both of these really massive, important programs or redevelopment projects, we clearly see that there needs to be a path to sustainability, right? You know, I think that it was obvious in the Friendship Court presentation about how going to four fifty allows them to ensure that they'll always be able to take care of the hundred and fifty voucher units, right? And the same thing, I think, needs to be true in any plan that you all accept from the Housing Authority. They have a major asset, forty acres of land, and they have three hundred seventy-six units and households and people that they need to take care of. And one of those paths is, they either need to leverage the value of the land or manage more units in the future in order to be sustainable. And while we have heard about the first couple of projects, they are about renovation, modernization, or brand-new units on the ball field at a fairly low density. I think it's fair for council to want to know what that long-term vision is about how you're going to take care of, and, and ensure the future of public housing, those three hundred seventy-six units. Because I think, real-world thinking, we're never getting more than seventy-five to eighty percent of the money we want from the federal government, so you're going to have to leverage the assets that you have in some other way. Or, you know, have other ongoing subsidies.
So one of my concerns with just looking at this, Friendship Court and PHA, they are not, you know, a city entity, where CRHA falls under, even if we look at it as separate, CRHA is still. And so as in the case now, National Housing Trust and PHA, they worked it out, and they're staying, but they could have sold that property if they decided to. And so I would like, I mean, in terms of the amount of land that we're talking about, we have, you know, ten point five million dollars going to PHA, and only fifteen in this. And I know we can modify budgets in the future, but going to public housing, which PHA in the future, even if it's not in fifteen, twenty years, they could decide to, once those tax credits expire, we could be in the same boat that we were in a couple of years ago with that discussion about what they were going to do with the property. So I support that project, but I think we still need to make sure we are making, one, I think we need to consider whether the PHA or CRHA deserve, you know, in terms of larger investment based on the ownership of it. But if we're going to give PHA this amount of money, we need to make sure that we, that they understand that it's stronger than an MOU in terms of what they can do. I mean, I think the same things you're asking about, you know, looking at government, governance and sustainability in an MOU agreement, we need to make sure that we have that with PHA because in the future, they could decide that that property can go to, they can sell it, and they can sell it to whomever they choose.
Yeah, I, I think that the obligations that whatever entity is going to accept, you know, this amount of subsidy from the city, you are fairly articulating a concern that I'm trying to share with you all too. So I don't think we're going to disagree about that. I, I do think that, you know, what we heard in our work session was a little bit more about how the sustainability, the path to sustainability occurs in one project versus the other. I feel confident from what the discussions have been over time that that has to be the case for both projects.
And then the housing rehabilitation, just looking from our, you know, the consent agenda this year and how many loans have been paid back, I would like to know how we are ensuring that, you know, the investment that we're making there, that it's staying, you know, in low-income families, and that they're not selling, you know, the, you know, the properties off, and whatever we can do to ensure that this investment is also a long-term and, versus a short-term investment. I think we've had at least six or seven of those rehabilitation loans paid back, which means those families sold and moved, or, you know, I don't know if we know how that storyline is going.
I, I don't know that we can know where they went. I, I have noted the same, that there are folks who are not staying for the entirety of the twenty-year lien, yeah.
And a significant amount that they are paying back, which means that it was just a short amount, amount of time that they were in after the rehabilitation. So just whatever we can figure out to make sure that this is money well-spent too. I would like to, I don't know what that is, but I just would like for us to brainstorm about that.
Sure. I, I think it's a, it's a interesting policy question, right? Because you've got the, you know, emergency side and some of those other repairs that help people to stay in homes. But it's true, we can't know how long somebody will stay. Yeah, I agree.
Isn't that a question of asking AHIP what their policies are for when they do? Because the, the major entity that does our affordable rehabs is AHIP.
Yeah, no, but that would be our policy. It's the loan that, it's the agreement that it happens with the city. So they would only know what they do in terms of repairs. After that, it's the agreement that the city has with the homeowner.
But I'm, I'm going way back when I was the architect. But I'm going way back when I was the architect rehab specialist for the Shawcell Housing Improvement Program. And we had agreements with the clients that would ensure the investment of CHIP would stay within an affordable housing kind of range. And so I just wanted to know, I don't know that level of detail with AHIP. And I know, I remember when we asked, it was either Stacy Pathia or Kathy McHugh, what was the agreement that was made between, you know, anytime we give CAF money to AHIP, we have to make sure that our investment is good. So I agree, we need to tight, really have a tight understanding of that. But I thought they had at their level also safeguards to make sure that this wasn't just something that you'd rehab someone's home and then they could sell it at market rate.
That's why those dollars are coming back, though, is because when they're selling it, they're getting some of that payback.
But I'm hearing now that the turnover is higher than anybody thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a secondary agreement. Just understand that, you know, that's the contingency that the, it's like a second mortgage, right? You know, we have a lien on those homes for the amount of the, the project value that was done in the improvement. And then, should somebody stay, we forgive it 5% every year, right? With the idea that, you know, it's full forgiveness, it's free, you know, should you be there for 20 years, right? But in the event that it's not, that's why you get those on the council agenda. So, you know, I think any affordable housing program model, they all have policies, right? You know, I mean, whether it's AHIP or Habitat, right? I mean, you could say, well, you know, people only stay in a Habitat house X number of years, then they sell it, right? You know, outside of like a community land trust model where you don't realize all the equity back yourself, which I don't think that we would contemplate with people who were homeowners already, I don't know how you limit somebody's property rights to benefit from the value of their own home.
Well, one thing that I found is that people don't understand, one, actually, you know, what they're getting into, but they also don't understand, a lot of people, the value. You know, there is one developer in town who's buying for way under, or at least a few years ago, from way under values. People are not understanding, even if you bought a home in the 60s, 70s, it's worth, let's say, in an area that's 300 or so, 350,000, but they are writing a check for 200 because they only owe 70, you know, thousand on it. They are looking at that like they're getting, and I don't know what the city could do in terms of, you know, making sure that people understood or had somewhere to go if they were contemplating, contemplating that.
That sounds more like a consumer protection and education program about being out in communities and talking with homeowners in some of those areas and saying, you know, do your, educate yourself, know the value of your property, remember what your tax assessment is each year, you know? Talk to a Realtor, don't, you know, I mean, that sounds like a public education campaign or a community outreach campaign to me. And I'm not sure, you know, I see legal aid faces out there. I don't know if they feel that's in their wheelhouse or not, but I mean, there is some, some nonprofit that may adopt.
Well, my only thought is if we are, you know, investing in the rehabilitation, but it's not staying in, you know, income brackets that are low, then that may be something that we just should think about.
All right, so continuing on for a couple more slides. Wanted to touch on the operational impact. This also gets to the affordability piece that Chrissy will be discussing here in just a little bit. But with these, you know, the other thing we need to consider is with these capital decisions, there's also an operating impact that many of these projects will have. Many of these, you know, I'm showing the FY, what was adopted last year, the operating impact, because many of these fluctuate based on timing changes and on some of these larger projects. And we're still kind of developing the five-year operational costs for 20 to 24. However, what we did want to point out is that any of these operating impact costs that are projected to affect the 20 budget have been included in the departmental budgets or have been requested as new requests. So we are looking at those and making sure that we're taking care of those. And it's not just a build a massive building and then not have the money to staff it or you do the utilities and those kind of things. So making sure that we are accounting for that as well as we move along. And so it's more than just the bricks and mortar piece of it. As I said before, you know, as you can see, we have a rather large unfunded list, just shy of 110 million. Here are some of the larger amounts that are up there as being unfunded. We did have some funding for West Main. And, you know, a few of these represent the differences such as West Main, new sidewalks, Parkland acquisition. These are amounts that they asked for above what we were able to fund in the CIP and then a couple of the other larger items within the CIP. And here's the Meadow Creek Valley Trail Tunnel that we were talking, railroad tunnel.
The scope of the McIntyre Park, what does that include? What is that, 6 million? Sorry, Brian.
I'm going to send Mr. Daley on the move again. McIntyre Park has a master plan and this is the implementation.
I do hope we don't have a bridge to nowhere.
No.
Okay.
No, the, just a brief update about where we are with the current projects in the park. The pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks is just about complete, should be complete, hopefully open to the public in the next 45 to 60 days. And the same is true for the skate park. This 6 million is, our original request was spread over two fiscal years, so these numbers are all in aggregate over the five-year CIP period. That would be to activate the remainder of the schematic design and complete the design that was intended in the master plan. So all of the facilities on the north end of the park, near Melbourne Road, entrance, parking, turnaround, trails, the bridge over, the long bridge over the tributary to Schenks Branch that connects the north and south sides of the park, spray ground at the north end of the park, play, a nature kind of, nature playground, which we haven't put a lot of form to yet, and all the associated infrastructure, picnic pavilions, restrooms, you know, ENS, et cetera. So that's what that number represents.
That includes our commitment when you first described at the intersection at Melbourne, our commitment from the city's perspective for the botanical gardens of the future. So basically, the parking area and all the hardscapes there is our commitment. I'm just trying to understand what commitment we've already made for that project.
We, the city has not committed to any aspect specifically of the botanical garden. That is the responsibility of the botanical garden, which they're raising funds to do and have a conceptual design, which they've shared with us, which is quite good. All of those support facilities that I just described, parking, entryway, et cetera, those are the facilities that would support the botanical garden at some point down the road, yes.
Again, is, is that supportive kind of investment? Is that the entire 6 million or a part of that? Because that...
The 6 million would complete, what we believe would complete everything on the north end of the park, yes.
But what needs to happen to support the McIntyre Botanical Garden? Isn't, isn't a complete kind of implementation of that north end of the McIntyre Park, correct?
Well, I guess that depends upon your point of view. You could certainly pick and choose components of the project to implement in a phased manner. But most assuredly, any infrastructure for utilities, entryway, parking, restrooms, et cetera, would be needed to support the botanical garden.
And then the Meadow Creek Trail, the whole comprehensive connection, you said that the actual trail piece is in our current CIP? To actually build out the gaps in that trail? Like, there's a difference between the tunnel and then there's other just infrastructure that has to take place around?
The tunnel is a sort of standalone type of project. There is funding in the existing CIP and we're working to complete all of those components through existing funds and grant dollars, et cetera. Construction prices, as you are aware, continue to rise and, you know, we've run into a couple of situations where, you know, our construction estimates are beyond the funding that we have. So we're trying to phase that together and I'm working on a document that addresses each component of that entire corridor by kind of section, if you will.
Okay. When will we have that to be able to see?
In the next week or so, I hope.
Oh, okay.
And when you say grant money, is that the state tip money?
There are several funding sources.
It's matching grant, is that, isn't that correct?
Most of it is transportation assistance funds through VDOT.
Thank you. Sidewalks, sorry, that's not you. So we have a certain amount that's allocated and then so we're going off of, Amanda has that prioritization kind of scheme that they follow by neighborhood. And then this new sidewalks, as you're saying, there's another 3 million that we know of that are considered priorities that we just don't have funding for. I'm just trying to understand how, the layers of the sidewalk infrastructure.
Some of that are the items that are already in the prioritization and some of them are things that aren't even on that list, right? Like, you've had a lot of advocacy around Elliott today. You've had a lot of advocacy from Mr. Halbert and a group about scribbling in the past, right? You know, those things aren't even in that plan right now.
Right. There are some where, I mean, some are on a priority list that you say not be committed. I mean, those have been discussed. Do you don't even think they're on her priority list? Like, I know for scribbling, it was considered, it was something else with that neighborhood that was considered a higher priority than the scribbling initiative. I'm just trying to understand, like, they're on some list somewhere. And then Elliott Avenue, I know, is much more robust than just sidewalks and a crosswalk. That's why it's the figure that it's at.
Yeah, there are a lot of sidewalk lists. Mr. Edwards, you know, come rescue me if you want at the microphone. But I would say there is the official priority list that they are working through, doing the engineering, have a plan over a certain number of years of CIP to accomplish. And then there are other areas where it is known to us that there are gaps in sidewalks and they're on a list, but they're not in the prioritized list.
So you say scribbling isn't even on the priority? Like, I know it's not the first priority right now considered for that neighborhood, but it's not on?
Yeah, it may be listed further down, somewhere on the overall citywide listing. But it's not high enough on the priority list to be one of the funded priorities.
And then Elliott, I know we've talked, I've asked a couple weeks ago of Leslie, just other funding sources, because those neighborhoods have gotten some CD-BDG funds that can, so they can go through the neighborhoods to kind of prioritize those. And then we have just sidewalk prioritization and then just true CIP. I mean, but I've tried to explain to people that just putting in a crosswalk there isn't going to cover it. I mean, that's just, that's not going to provide any more safety than we have today. So I'm just trying to get a sense for, is there ways that we can piecemeal some of these things from other funding sources that are, that have been allocated to those specific parts of the city more holistically?
I think we're doing the same thing again, because we have to see the list, right? And see what's already there. And I mean, even if those neighbors are not in the room today, they are still have been expecting that at some point, whatever is at the top of it is by now is completed.
Right.
Would you like a follow-up in a council meeting or in just a report from staff about sidewalks?
I'm happy just to get a summary, just to understand kind of the things. Because I think I've made some assumptions that some of these things are in prioritization lists. And I know that the Elliott Avenue has been talked about extensively as being a streetscape initiative and not just a sidewalk initiative because of the safety and how much housing development is going on. So where, and then if it's a streetscape, it's not just a sidewalk, where does that fall in your world? I guess I'm trying to understand.
And the Elliott was identified in the strategic investment area as well.
It was, and it was just funded initially to get the design started. We were trying at the time to keep pace with the new development on each side of Elliott Avenue. That way, we would have some, some design work done that we could kind of model with that as we go down the whole corridor. But the right-of-way and the construction funds have never really completely been identified for that. So that's where we're at now.
Was that ever considered to be a, was that?
It is a streetscape.
Was it one of the smart-scale applications?
It was not.
Okay. So it's going to be city-funded completely? All right.
As of right now.
As of now, okay.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. We're going to start talking on the affordability. And I'm going to turn this over to Chrissy Hamel, our debt guru, to start walking you through this piece of it.
Okay, so we wanted to start by just sort of highlighting the different sources and ways that we fund the CIP. I know you've seen this before, but just to sort of reiterate, we fund the CIP with funds from the general fund. We've used year-end surpluses in years past. We have other sources, which include small amounts of money of reimbursement for joint projects from the county and different things, and then bonds. Bonds are currently funding about 66% of the CIP and do account for the largest funding source at the moment. Oops, sorry, sale of my thunder. If we look at the outstanding debt in the current, as of June 30th, we had about $85 million in general governmental debt. That excludes the utility debt that we have outstanding. And in the current CIP proposal, we're looking at our annual debt service cost going from $10.9 million up to the $16 million in 2026, which basically equates to about an 820, approximately an $825,000 increase per year. We currently have a policy that our debt limit, the ceiling of that is 10% and you all set a target of 9%. Under the current proposal, we are bumping right up to the 9% and exceeding it slightly in 2023.
Can I, can I switch? So that means that...
Can you put your microphone down?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, sorry, excuse me. So that depends on projected budgets for each of those years? Are those, that's operating budgets? Is that where you're?
It depends on the operating budget amount. It also depends on the amount of debt that we're issuing each year, which we issue, we are issuing based on when the projects are beginning. So there are a lot of variables here and this is a projection, but all things being steady, constant right now, this is what the projection would look like.
So Chrissy, when we calculate this, approximately how much growth on the operating side? Are you plugging in? I think that is responsible to what Mike said.
Yeah, is that just a, is that just a formula that we assume that? I mean, because if we're looking 10 cycles out on the operating budget, are we just assuming that it's X growth per year against the prior year?
We're building in 1.5% growth.
So that's what that represents?
Correct.
So the... So here's where, this is like, okay, so, yeah, so the, the growth in the CIP or in the debt, every year, the debt payments is higher. It's different from 1.5%, is what you're saying, each year going ahead? Okay, for reasons that are too complicated for me to probably understand.
Yeah, the percent is based on the general fund. So as the general fund budget grows, your percent will change and your target, you know, those dollar amounts will increase.
Okay. And then the, like, and I know that this is just, this is what you do when you plan out budgets, but obviously, when you have recessions or downturns, it can significantly change what happens in any given year in a way that you can't really project.
That's correct.
Okay, and that could happen in any, in this 10 years ahead.
If the budget was flat or actually went down, then it would maybe change your ratio above the 9%, yes. And if the budget was to grow by 4% instead of 1.5%, then it would go lower than 9%.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The other part we talked about was the actual general fund transfer, the cash funding or Pago that we talk about with the CIP. We, in the current projection, we are looking at that amount going from $5.3 million in '19 to a projection of $7.9 million in 2024. That's basically what we've done in the past is, to help offset that, we view, a part of our policy is that we transfer any surpluses from the general fund to the CIP. And as you'll see in this chart from, in looking at, our 3% is our policy, but using the year-end surplus, we've been closer to about 5% of what we're transferring for Pago. The proposal in front of you, or that you will see, is a little bit different this year in that we are putting the year-end surplus. in that we are putting the year-end surplus into the CIP, but we've also allocated that to additional affordable housing projects. So we don't, or redevelopments, sorry, we don't necessarily have that to buy down, if you will, the increased general fund transfer from nineteen to twenty. So putting those two pieces together, both the increase in the debt service and the, the need for the increased dollars for debt service and the transfer, sorry. In two thousand and twenty, we're looking at two point three million dollars of additional funds. And then the point of this chart here is just to basically illustrate the idea that that's not just a one-time increase, that we are building in an increase in all of the subsequent years as well. And the current projection is looking at an increase of about a million dollars every year to pay for the CIP. So it sort of reiterates the fact that, you know, you want to be strategic when you're looking at your projects and planning out your funding, that we are obligating increases. Part of the other thing in order to increase the available funds to pay for the increase in the general fund, transfers, different taxing revenues, did you want to talk about this?
Sure. Basically, what we're showing in this chart is what one cent on these various taxes would, would generate based on our preliminary, very rough, very early preliminary FY twenty revenue estimates for these sources. They're still subject to change. And as we point out here, for example, real estate with the current policy, forty percent of the, the real estate or personal property tax where you'd increase that would be dedicated to the city's transfer to, to the city schools budget each year. So there's, you know, these, these are still in flux. But council asked us, you guys at the last work session, asked us to, to provide you with some options if you were to look at raising taxes, what that would, would get you on, and we wanted to provide you with each of the sources and those dollar amounts.
Can you just remind me the other places that some of these dollars go just by contractual obligation? So if forty percent of the schools on our real estate, I get that.
The lodging tax.
So with the lodging tax, that, that's an interesting case because when you increase the tax, we would see the benefit of that in the, the current, in the FY twenty fiscal year. But based on the current agreement with the visitors bureau, the actuals, once the actuals actually came in, we would then be obligating an expense approximately two years down the road would be an increased expense that would, would eat into some of those.
And it wouldn't capture the increase anyway. It's based on the, what is it, the four, I can't remember. It's based on, when that agreement was reached, it's based on the rate that was established at that time. So it wouldn't necessarily capture that increase, but it would get a portion of the actuals.
It's based on.
Thirty percent of the first five percent and we're at six, seven percent at this point. So there's, there's a formula that goes into it.
Kind of put a little dollar amount in there. If you raise that, it doesn't affect that. I mean, that, it wouldn't be that you have to send any of that to the CACV now. It would go as an, it would be realized later, a couple of years from now, when it captures a portion of the actuals of the lodging tax. How much is that? Here's a, which amount, a million dollars here, almost, nine fourteen.
I mean.
Just to, I'm trying to get a scale, like. So what do they, what do, what do we say they're receiving for twenty?
They're receiving a million, over a million dollars in twenty from the.
For the first. It has nothing to do with that. It has to do with the actuals.
Yeah, it has to do with.
There's a certain number of pennies that we already are charging them and then we're getting that much back. And so I'm just trying to get a sense for the proportion. So our contribution of the CACV for next year will be a million dollars based on the funding agreement for twenty. About a million dollars. And the total money we get from that was, and I may saw this last weekend, forgotten. Like seven million dollars? Okay, that's, it helps me, as a proportion.
And isn't.
For example, I'm sorry, I mean.
And just, and, and isn't there state law that requires a certain percentage of your transit oriented tax, your tax goes to your tourist bureau? I thought that was required.
I'm unsure. I know our, our amount we transfer is based on an agreement, the city, county, visitors bureau, but I'm, I'm not sure.
We can check. I know that's the case for the county.
Yeah, I really thought that. I thought there was a tie to Virginia code.
Do, do you know Chris? Chris Ingles, coming to the mic to address that.
I think that's case for counties, but not necessarily cities.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the other item that we typically talk about being dedicated for things is, is the meals tax. But that is one cent of the, the meal tax. So if we increase it one cent, that doesn't mean we're increasing the dedication. We already have a cent of that set aside. So that wouldn't necessarily, by increasing that by a cent, it wouldn't necessarily affect what would be dedicated to debt service. That would be purely on the operational side.
Another question. Do we have, I know in the last couple of years, there's been a, there's been a fair amount of movement on some of these revenue sources because we don't know, like, I'm, you know, the figures come in and sometimes. Do we, what's our, and I've, I've never really known exactly what that cycle is because it's like sometimes there's good news that comes in later. Do, is there any sense right now about where we're going to, you know, like, was there better news? And are we going to get even better news in the first, you know, when we have to make real decisions, the force quarter next year, be on real estate or meals or whatever? Like, I know that when the CACV presentation, the hotel rates were actually a little bit lower in the last, in the last couple of quarters, there was a, there was a dip, I think of two or three percent compared to some of the period. So I was like, oh, that, that's a trend. But then I, I know that some of the other data has been really good for the city. So I'm just curious about what the decisions we'll be making for this budget or what are the trends we're expecting.
Sure. So we do have a revenue team that meets on a, right now we're meeting on a monthly basis. As we get into the, the budget cycle a little bit more, we'll be meeting a little more frequently. But that consists of the treasurer, commissioner of revenue, economic development, finance. And, and so we are constantly looking at those, those trends and our commissioner sends out those data as we get it in. There's always fluctuation. So it's, it's trending better than it has in the past. But that, but again, those can change month to month. And there's, you know, a lot of these taxes, there is some, what's the word I'm looking for? Variability and volatility, thank you. Some volatility within them. So it's, it's hard to say on a year-to-year. We're still so, and that's why I say these are very preliminary because we're still so early into the fiscal year at this point, that we're really basing this off of only a couple of months of data. So hopefully the answer we'll, we'll come back to will be, yes, we've been seeing, you know, we, we talk in January, a month from now, we'll say, yes, we've been seeing great trends in X, Y, and Z revenues. And we, we have, these are now actually worth more per, per penny.
Right.
But it's just, it's just still really too early at this point to, to really hammer down those trends at, at the moment.
Okay.
And my. Okay, so.
The next slide just sort of illustrates what we just talked about. It's just to sort of show, especially with the real estate tax. If you increased it by any, at the bottom, one cent up to five cent, you know, to illustrate that the city would get a portion, but then a portion of that increase also goes to the schools. And with that.
We get the schools budget?
Their operating budget request? Yeah, I, I actually, I usually have heard something by now. I'm going to reach out to them soon, definitely before Christmas and for the holidays and ask them about that, yeah.
And our work session, is that in January?
Not until the end of January.
Third week of January, maybe?
So I have to get a, some kind of idea from them in the next couple of weeks. It's something that we can at least plug into our budget right now, so.
Great.
So there's this next slide then. Speaking of which, so, you know, you, you saw that, you know, we don't know exactly where the revenues will be yet, but we have on the debt side, you know, close to two and a half million dollars of revenues that would be needed. Just to cover the plan, which we think is responsive to what you've asked staff to provide. And part of the meeting is hopefully after this slide to get your feedback about that. But there are some other big-ticket needs that are out there. And the school operating budget is something that is usually in the millions. I want to point out that while you saw that big number for schools, like eighteen point eight million dollars, that's absolutely no dollars about what you've had work sessions with them about in the past. You know, their VMDO study or, you know, new elementary schools or reconfiguration or any of that. So not a penny towards that. That's maintenance. And, and then there's the, the city operating budget needs. You know, we're not all the way through digesting departmental requests. And I'm not talking about even the new requests, just about, you know, change in cost and, you know, what their business is. And I think that council has started to talk about even, you know, in discussions about our public safety team and a little bit in general about other departments, about the need to be at market with our competitors on compensation. And the ongoing efforts to establish living wage at fifteen dollars an hour. And I'll just say that, you know, while it's good that we're in a year where there was a three percent general wage increase, that there's a lot of years with, you know, two percent or bonuses or, or less. And we are at the point now where we've got some departments where we're out of scale. And police being chief among those, where we are now to the point where we are many officers below where we'd like to be with our force. And we're losing them to other folks, not far away, not to federal agencies as we did in the past after they were trained, but to local competitors. And I think that we're well past the point where we're going to need to look at a serious adjustment there. When we talk about living wage and another increase from fourteen forty to fifteen dollars, talking about four point one seven percent. So if we start our thinking about what does that mean to any employee in the city, a general wage increase at four point one seven percent, if that happens, you know, on the public safety side, particularly with police, that needs to have a corresponding increase of nine percent just to keep pace and still be below what the hiring rate is that UVA police has expressed. I know that you've seen media piece about the county PD going to a step plus. And if you think about a community, we talk a lot about, you know, housing and affordability and, you know, why don't, you know, police or teachers or social workers or firefighters live in the city? Well, you know, firefighters, you know, that de facto, like what I'm talking about in going to fifteen, firefighters are at the bottom of that scale, right? You know, and they work fifty-six hours a week in order to earn what their salary is. You know, police right now are starting sixteen hundred dollars less per year than a starting firefighter.
Do you mind just saying what those salaries are, the annual salaries?
It's about forty-one nine for a firefighter.
Forty-one thousand.
It's about forty thousand, three forty-five for a police officer. And just for comparison, right? You know, you look in social services, your typical family services specialist, you know, lowest paid person in that role is forty-four thousand dollars. You look at a teacher, zero years of experience on the city scale, which we pulled before this meeting, say a good comparison, forty-six, three. So, I mean, we are talking about, you know, some serious commitment that would need to happen on the compensation side if we're going to address a serious problem that we have on compensation and PD. So there are certainly potentially other considerations that you want, you know, we haven't written our operational budget at all. Part of that is to get any of your feedback about that tonight. And then for you to kind of give our team some feedback about what did you hear in the presentation tonight? Because we're about ready to, you know, go to the planning commission on what, twelve days from now.
So operationally, I know one thing that has come up in the off-cycle was from a benefits perspective, the maternity and paternity benefit. And I really just would like to understand what dollar amount, what, what considerations we should have for that because that's come up from multiple employees. And the more I've, I've learned about it, the more I realize, wow, we, we have some work to do there. And so that was a specific benefit. I know it's come up among my colleagues as well. In terms of the compensation, are you able to, I mean, I just don't have a, I have a sense for what, when you were saying we need to get to this point, what does that mean in terms of dollars?
Three point three million dollars.
Three point three?
Yeah.
Is that comprehensive of the organization?
All employees, including the public safety increase I talked about.
So those would be to get them to be a competitive wage?
That would move starting rates for a firefighter and police officer to be on par at like forty-three, nine, yeah.
Okay, so.
And still behind what we know UVA is posting today as their new starting rate of forty-five, yeah.
But across the organization?
Not today. As of January one, I believe is the truth, yeah. But less than a teacher significantly.
And what, what do we do, what, where does the sheriff's office fit in here?
Sheriff's office is quite a bit less. I think, you know, they're constitutional officers. Part of that is, you know, the money that we get from the state, we do supplement that in some cases. But I can't tell you off the top of my head, but it is less than either of those by a good bit.
Yeah, their salaries start with the comp board salaries. But it would, yeah, it would be less. But, yeah, I don't know the specifics either of that. And if we want, if we were to say, you know what, we're going to make a transformative change in how we look at our, our own operating budget because we recognize the importance of focusing at home first, meaning internally, where would you suggest we, we start looking? Where would those trade-offs have to come from? Just give some examples.
Well, part of it might come out of this budget that you just looked at, right? You know, because a lot of that money is cash funded. You know, it's not all in debt. Part of that would be whatever consideration the elected officials would give to adding revenue to the pot. You know, I mean, we show you a chart every year about what all the different taxes are and what it would mean if you increased them. You know, I think that that's certainly part of the equation. And then short of that, the answer is decide what things you want to not do or do less of. You know, there's a lot of things that the city government does and we could talk about what things aren't mandated and, you know, what departments you might do less in.
And if you saw, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I know that, I'm remembering two years ago when we came in with a shortfall and we did what, you know, like asked different departments if you were to have to do a cut, what would have, and there was some ranking of some approach to it. Leslie, you remember? And, and I know like in the Warren administration, there were scenarios that you'd ten percent, five percent, whatever. And if you've heard of different ways of approaching this. But so if we were going to look at, if we were, you know, if we weren't going to increase revenue substantially, I'm just, and I don't know where the body will be. But, and if you were to say, well, we know that there are going to be cost drivers, both operationally in the CIP in those different ways, but we would look for savings in other ways, we, that would be one way to do it. I mean, and the, the danger always is that you reduce services. That's always the, the fear. So if you ask for five percent reductions across the board, then you have to reduce services. But on the other hand, we're going to have to make hard choices, it looks like here, no matter what. And we are going to, especially if we're increasing, you know, compensation across the board in different ways. So the, I, I'm, I may be stating the obvious, but if we're looking at, you're, you're saying to us that we will have to find places that we would cut if we were to, you know, what, what do you want to do less of, right? I mean, that, that's, so.
Should you commit to spending, then?
Right.
Then absolutely so.
So the question is how do we get the best information about things that we could do less of and have a process? Where we're advised on that.
And also dollars that we send out that aren't spent internally or on our own direct services, but are going to, whether it's outside agencies or otherwise, what opportunities?
What's an example of that?
Well, we have our ABRT process.
What?
Our ABRT process.
Oh, right, of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we didn't say that we were reducing any.
Level fund them for this next year. Oh, no, I'm just saying, like, looking longer term, some of the decisions we might have to be considering, especially if we're relooking at this process.
Well, that's what we are supposed to be doing with this review that we're doing now. Also, I did mention the, the sick bank, I think. And I think that's something that doesn't, that can add value, but doesn't cost from what I read a lot. And if we could look at.
We do have a group analyzing that and what our department, our team, our leadership team, lead team just had a discussion about it, what, last month?
Yeah, a few weeks ago. I'm just a firm believer that when we compensate people appropriately, that we can hire and retain the best talent. I think we can get more out of that talent. And I just feel like we really have to invest in our, in ourselves. And I just feel like we really have to invest in ourselves and this organization and that I think it will pay itself in return. And I realize that you take a leap of faith to do that, but I just think right now we're hurting ourselves by not being at that level. And as a result, I think that the community feels it too with the responsiveness or, I just, I just feel like we have some opportunities here and I just really, I want to find, I want us to discuss really hard how we can invest in this organization in a way to do that, to hire and retain the best talent. And to be competitive in this market, there's a lot of options for people right now, unemployment rate is pretty low.
Well, I was just thinking, I just came up with, you know, trying to get the five basic categories of responsibility that we have as a local government. And I think, you know, there's safety and infrastructure, education, it's your asset management, which is both people and building. And then I think housing is a top five. I think affordable housing is become a critical basic need. And, you know, when, when we had a functioning housing and urban development, the federal government took care of that. But I do think, you know, people are always talking about, what is the core function of local government? It used to be those four, I think, and then housing now has become a key core function of government. And, you know, and then safety, you can stretch that and say safety and human welfare. But I just wanted to, I want to start thinking in terms of these broad, broader buckets of need so that we know what is our core function. And it does get down to that, you know, going back to our strategic plan as well.
And I was talking about, as she talks about housing and we look at the dollars that we're looking at, this is a significant investment in that slide. I really would like to spend more time on understanding what assurances can we put in place because I want to feel assured that, I'm certainly committed to investing in those projects, but I want to be assured that those projects have and will continue to vet every other funding resource available to them. Because that's every dollar we put towards that. If there was other funding sources that are available that aren't being tapped, then we're putting, we're putting money where maybe it doesn't necessarily have to go because there are other funding sources out there for that need. And I just, I've asked, I assume some of you have seen in the emails, I just am asking a lot of questions of that leadership of those projects just to understand that so that we can feel confident that they've tapped every other funding resource and looked at every other program possible because this, that's big dollars. And if there are other programs that we should be looking into, that they should be looking into seriously, then I just, I want to make sure that that's been fully vetted.
And then I, back to the floating the bond, we have all these things, so I just hope that, I know we're trying not to do that, but I hope that we are preparing, you know, to present information in case that becomes something that we have to consider.
But that gets us back to this debt scenario.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions too, just back to the affordable housing. So when, when we've got the fifteen million for the public housing redevelopment, is that, is that including the Crescent Halls redevelopment? What is, what is that including? Because you identified more specifically in the friendship court monies, it was phase one, but is that implied that that's-
Well, the friendship court money, right, the six point one-two is programmed in twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-four, in one and a half, two, and two and a half million dollars, right? That, that was the ask that we originally knew about as a staff. It was only at the work session last week that we learned what that bottom line looked like.
Right, right.
Which in fact totaled, as I recall, a total of thirteen point two million additional dollars that they asked for in phase one, which is twenty-twenty. I believe that bottom line said for friendship court, three point seven to five point two million dollars. I'm looking at Beth, she's shaking her head at me a little bit, so I hope I'm there. And, and so what we did when council said, you know, what can we do about this phase one?
Right.
You know, we tried to hit the middle of that.
And, and I just wanted to know, is, for the public housing redevelopment, is that their phase one?
Now, that's a little more complicated, right? You know, they talked about phase one and then kind of a one B, right? You know, and in that phase one, they had Avon Levy, South First Street Ball Field, and Crescent Halls. And they each had budgets and they gave you a chart that showed, hey, if we get nine percent tax credits, and if we get four percent tax credit, these are our numbers. And then at the end, there was a slide that said, you know, that one B is South First Street, if we take down those units that are currently there and build, I think, two hundred instead of eighty, as I recall. So the difference in should they be successful in the tax credit market was being from around sixteen million to twenty-six million in the chart that they provided. And so when you look at a fifteen million dollar commitment potentially from the city and at least five million dollars in private philanthropy that we know about, that's been announced by Mr. Capshaw, Dave Matthews, and the band, in addition to other philanthropy efforts that are underway, as I understand it, I think, you know, that there is for sure twenty million dollars. Now, I think we also talked about, you know, those four projects may or may not be exactly where the redevelopment committee and the group is headed for that first phase. And I think, you know, we need some clarity about that. I understand even in meetings this week, there's some discussion about maybe not Avon Levy, maybe Sixth Street. So, I mean, either way, what we know is that there's twenty million dollars in the first five years and there's probably more that will come to the table.
So that was one of the, because from what my understanding is that the Avon Levy is, you know, first the environmental study, so that, right, that has to happen. And because the land, the field area at First Street, the targets, the targets for the start and completion of these projects is less than five years, right? So I mean, if we are saying we have enough money to start, you know, year one, but they are also, they're saying, and at least in the, what I'm remembering, that they could potentially start both Crescent Halls and at least like South First Street at the, at the same, same time. So those projects, they could be working on simultaneously, so that's not a five-year-
I thought that was a year. This is to support those, all those initiatives, isn't that it?
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So the amount of, I think we're still thinking at some point that they are going to come up with the money, and I know we're talking about sustainability, but we also know that they're not there. But they have the land to do these developments and apparently based on what, their discussions with the developer, they'll have the resources to do them faster than this five-year plan would fund or help fund. So I know you're saying there may be other sources, but-
That's, that's true. However, I would say that, for example, like in the tax credit decision not happening till at least June, right, when this funding would be there, if we look at the first three projects, and we don't know for sure today that those really are the first three projects, I think what we can feel most sure about is that Crescent Halls and the Ball Field are the first two. I've got Ms. Johnson and Ms. Dreyfus shaking their head at me, so I feel most confident about that. The twenty million dollar commitment well exceeds that. And if there was nine percent tax credits, you could do all four of those projects for ten million dollars less than, you know, or six million dollars less than what is currently committed or proposed by the city and committed by private philanthropy. So, you know, if the project changes to another location, I don't know what the development of that is. I mean, that's all part of how we need to be working in partnership to understand that. I do think that there is adequate dollars. I've had a discussion this week with the developer about how we program the dollars and whether it needed to be front-loaded or could it be, have the smoothing effect that we programmed. And he said if there was commitment, then it wouldn't matter that it was programmed three, 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 three. So if that was to change, then we could, we're going to have between now and March or April to really decide that. But for now, is fifteen, you know, more than adequate, I would say so, yeah.
And so at what point will we see some of those support mechanisms? When will we get documentation of just a proposal that says this is the type of things that staff is recommending we consider as we, before we make, we start to have some of these negotiations in terms of the agreements themselves? Because the numbers are one thing, but what we put behind these numbers and the agreements in place, I'm just trying to understand when we would expect to kind of be able to review those guidelines?
I can only say that, you know, we need to be working as staff collaboratively with the housing authority and the redevelopment committee and their board in order to get there. And I've got Ms. Kelly who's sitting there, who is actively working in all of those contexts, but there, this is the next level of that discussion and decision-making. And, and I believe that the first of those meetings is scheduled for eleven o'clock next Monday, right, Ms. Johnson? Yeah, so I have a meeting with some of those folks then.
And I guess if we have just thoughts, we should just provide them to you directly?
Sure.
About considerations.
And if there is some other construct or venue for discussion that you want to involve counselors in that, then, you know, that needs to be discussed too. You all are going to be the decision-makers about this in the end, and if you need to be involved in some way, then we need to figure that out.
Yeah, and the Housing Advisory Committee's policy subcommittee is going to be looking at just some specific questions that have come up already, and I certainly have encouraged council if there's other questions, but I'm certainly sharing whatever output comes from that.
Okay. So we open up for public comment?
Is that where we're at? Jean, need anything more from us?
Well, I, I just want to just flag my support for Elliott Street. Because you are going to be talking about this with the planning commission. And I think, I think that's what you want us to start telling you, right?
Sure.
That would be helpful.
And I think it'd be important for us to understand that if we don't do the tunnel for the Meadow Creek Trailway, all the other work on that trail is actually for naught because it doesn't go anywhere. I mean, it's not, it's not a continuous circuit.
So when will we see the complete, and you're, this is Elliott Avenue, is that what it is? Okay. When will we see the list of, the full list?
Next Tuesday.
We're going to be ready by next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yes.
I think one question I have is, so if you, if you roll back on the fifteen million dollars, like, you know, earlier years ago, when we talked about this last time, the idea was it's an independent housing authority, they have their own balance sheet, you know, that, and because the federal government has pulled out of this, the supports, that that's one of the reasons that independent housing authorities have had to redevelop on their own and go to market rate and so on because they have to come up with a different financial model because they don't have the subsidy coming from the federal government as much. Okay, so that, that was where we were talking years ago, but now, now we're talking about this with a whole different package, with the private philanthropy and the help from the developer, and it's, and it's much faster and it's a whole different package. But I guess my question, and friendship court is different because it's much, it's smaller and it's, and it's, it's that one, but when you're talking about forty acres, and I just wonder, is there, is there a way of trying to have some revenue there to offset the city? So the city now, it's a different model because now the city is just stepping in and providing a city subsidy. It's not saying CRHA on your balance sheet, we will help, but, but you will figure out how to make the finances in this work. Now it's saying, we'll contribute because it's that urgent, it's that big, we want to help.
But, excuse me, I thought it was still leveraged. I mean, they're still going out, this is still understanding that they're getting a lot, they're going out to Lytec and that at some point that a Levy redevelopment would be providing revenue.
Well, see, that's what I don't, is that built into this plan to offset against the fifteen million dollars? I mean, is that, is that a contingency of where we would come and we would say to the public, well, look, there will be some offset of this fifteen million, or is it just every year, three million dollars from the city CIP and that's, and it's not offset? It's not, there is no revenue?
So I think you'll remember, there's a slide right after this where I've got a bullet about the, what's the pathway to sustainability, right? You know, so, you know, I do believe that, you know, the housing authority and the board and residents, you know, have to agree that there's going to be more than three hundred and seventy-six units eventually on the forty-plus acres. That's the only way for them to be secure, that there will always be, or, you know, foreseeable future will be public housing, right? And you only do that by having some greater number. I don't know whether that's twice as many or three times as many units, but I assume that they are doing that work in the same way that friendship court presented to you at four fifty. We know if a third of those are market rate, we'll ensure that we'll have the hundred fifty voucher units going into the future.
But my question, so my question, there's sustainability on the organization's terms, then there's the, the city paying a certain amount of money just out of, out of pocket. And I understand it's leveraged to create other things, but the question is that amount of money because we are dealing with, I mean, all these things are going to be expensive. So the rationale that we usually do when we invest in something is we say, well, it'll, we'll get tax revenue later or whatever, it's just, but, but with new expenditures like this, is there a way of saying, well, we're going to spend three million dollars each year, but there's some revenue that-
Whoa.
Could, could be gotten back through the, through the acreage or the way that it's used or some way, I don't-
I, I would say to you that PHA is a project where there will be tax revenues and, I mean, there's different projections about what the total value of that redevelopment is, and I don't want to, you know, crunch those numbers with you here, but it is hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, every year in new tax revenue. That is a different situation with the housing authority. There is no long-term payoff in tax because we won't be getting any tax value from those. That's true. Now, if they are in a public, public-private partnership and some portion of those units are taxable, that might be a different situation.
Right. But I think even how we look at that, because it may not be returned in terms of the revenue, tax revenue, but you're talking about what happens when you provide people with safe, secure, and stable housing and what's the return on that. So you just have to look at that in a different way than you normally.
Yeah, I agree, you know, as, as somebody who has talked about, like, what should we be doing as a city to look internally at equity? And we're having a community discussion about equity in schools. I think it's hard to imagine how you advance equity in those communities without having safe places to live.
Mm-hmm. Should they come, I guess, I guess? So you all, the rest of, there was another page?
That's, that's really just supplementary, you know, appendix, it's not part of the presentation, so if you want-
So we're going to open up public comment if there's anyone that would like to speak? Just come to the mic.
While we're on the subject of public housing and-
Could you state your name, please?
Yes, John Hall from Fry Spring. I think there should be some thought given to stewardship on the part of the tenant or the person that's living in the house. And there's got to be some pride of ownership. I don't know how you do that when you're a tenant, but if there were, I think it would be easier for houses to be maintained or places of living spaces to be maintained. And that's really what we need to champion, maybe form a new program in the city of Charlottesville to do that.
Good evening. My name is John Gaines, I'm a city resident. Back on June the fourth, I forwarded to council a memo that I never did receive any response from. I left that memo in the city manager's office and the secretary said that she would get them to each council member. As I looked at this memo that's dated June the fourth- As I looked at this memo that's dated June the fourth, some of the the concerns relates to budgets. For instance, one item that I mentioned, council should continue to accept some of the hurt, our city is suffering from the August the 11th through the 12th outburst. Donate your salary increase, 2018 through June 2019 to the housing fund. Now Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill would receive an exemption from this request. Secondly, place the revenue sharing funds that we received from Albemarle County into the housing fund account. Thirdly, begin to address concerns about neighborhood gentrification by providing older residents lower repair loans, since you're in the real estate business, and I can understand why you're in it. And fourthly, appoint a committee to address the need to make neighborhood streets safer. I don't know if any of you have traveled Eighth Street lately, but those streets in the Tithman Page area needs to be addressed. And the fifth one is not a budget concern, but take unenforceable audences off the books, such as shooting of firecrackers. I don't need to go to McIntyre Park on the Fourth of July, because I can see it in my neighborhood. Then two more I added, would you resume the meetings with neighborhoods? And we you haven't met with the neighborhoods in quite a while. And lastly, you have a call-in for counselors when they are absent. Why can't you fund a call-in for citizens if they have questions that they want to address council on council meeting evenings? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Hohenberger. I'm with the Ridge Street Neighborhood Association, and I am here tonight to talk to you about Elliott Avenue. The Ridge Street neighborhood is a really special and unique part of the city. We have a really diverse mix of residents from all walks of life, living literally right next door to each other in a way that doesn't happen everywhere in Charlottesville, and Elliott Avenue is right in the middle of all of that. I think a lot of the neighbors that I've talked to agree, as I do with counsel, that affordable housing is a top priority, and we don't want to be asking for a big fancy street scape project with a big price tag, just for fun. It's really for the quality of life in the neighborhood. We're talking about Friendship Court, we're talking about Crescent Halls, we're talking about South First Street, all of those are in our neighborhood, and Elliott Avenue is right in the middle. And right now, it's a it's a place where people can't walk and feel safe because the cars are speeding through. The neighborhood has changed really substantially in the last 10 or 15 years. There's a lot more houses there, there's a lot more nonprofits, churches, organizations, small businesses, and you have an opportunity here to create real quality of life by letting residents walk through that area and mingle together and meet each other at a day-to-day level, so we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ned Mickey with Concord, Resident Concord Drive in City. I'm here as a president of Greenbrier Neighborhood Association, and I'm also a member of the Ryvanna Trails Board, speaking on behalf of funding for greenways, and specifically the shovel-ready project that's been adopted in numerous city plans that runs that we talked about with the tunnel. So you're not going to be able to see this map much, but here's the railroad coming here, this is a 250 bypass, Charlottesville High School, Greenbrier School is right here, Hearthwood Apartments are right here. Right now, Parks and Rec is working on a little section of trail right here that they have funding for. They may or may not have funding to get over here to Hillsdale, that hasn't been clear to us, but there's been no funding set aside in the CIP, in the in the five-year CIP, to get this important link that goes down to Mickey Drive and Hearthwood, where that community lives. And the plan carries on beyond Hearthwood to go under the existing culvert on hydraulic, under existing culvert on 250, and gets to the city gardens back here, and which ultimately gets you to Barracks Road on Meadow Brook Road, or whatever that peaceful little road is. So this is a level way for everybody to get, if the tunnel is built, you can get all the way downtown on essentially a level off-road, safe way to go. And it connects up, it's important for the connect up Hearthwood so that the kids can get to Greenbrier School. I want to mention the social equity part of it. I know a couple of you went to the Charles Brown presentation at the Jefferson School, African-American city planner from Boston, or I can't remember where, but he's.
Brunswick.
His whole talk was about how trails and bike-ped things are social equity. And it's really important, I talked to you last time about that it's not just that in low-wealth communities, they don't have cars, that's that's certainly a big problem, but also, it could be that they have a car, but they can't afford to keep insurance on it, so they can't drive it, or they can't afford to pay the registration, so they can't drive it, or that it hasn't passed inspection, and they can't pay for it to get fixed up to do that, or it's got all the paperwork, it's got the inspection, but it's just broken, and they can't fix it and do it. But the other big problem I talked to you about, that's a very common situation in Charlottesville community, is people without a driver's license, and they don't have it because they can't get a driver's license or because it's suspended. And I wondered, I knew it was common, just because I see it all the time in courts and represent people all the time in courts, but I wondered how common it is. I asked a clerk if they had a way to calculate it, they didn't, so I just went online, and I counted how many individual cases there were in the City of Charlottesville General District Court of driving suspended, driving without a license, and driving as a habitual offender. So these are individual cases, Charlottesville, 2017. Keep in mind that there are about probably 240 court days a year, and so if they had, if there was one individual case a year, that would be a lot for each day in court, that would be a lot. Keeping in mind that this is a subset of people who have the problem, because some people just don't drive who have that problem, no license, suspended, and then a lot of people drive but don't get caught. So this is a subset of the big problem. So if there were 240, that would be one every day, and that would be a lot. But that's not the number, the number is 655 people, individual cases in 2017, of driving no license, driving suspended. And so that's a huge problem in our community. Greenways are a big part of the answer that's been planned for years with the city to help solve the problem. Greenways are friendly, they're away from cars, they're level, Charlottesville is discourages biking and walking because it's not level, but when we take advantage of the stream valleys that we can here with the existing plans, then that solves a problem. We've been planning these things for years, this is a city map, 1972, Greenbrier Park, and it specifically says this trail, multi-use trail, ought to go to the where the city gardens are, they call it the fairgrounds back then, and should get through the tunnel. In 1982, the city acquired this easement that goes right by Hearthwood Apartment for a multi-use trail, because they understood how important it was, the city acquired that easement, 1982. This is a 1991 bicycle plan adopted by city council, Board of Supervisors and the MPO. This is the exact plan we're talking about, it's rated as a high priority, 1991, not on the ground. This is 2003 bike-ped plan adopted by city council. There is this project again, again, is a high priority. This is an important one, this is the 2013 master plan for the Meadow Creek Stream Valley Park. So this was worked up with our neighborhood as to what the park ought to look like, and this is the exact thing we're talking about, connecting to the John Warner Parkway, connecting up to Morton Drive behind Boto's. And what they've, again, what we've built is just a very small section, we just we have funding for less than half of it, and right now, from what I'm hearing, there's nothing in the CIP plan to complete this in the in the next five years. This is the MPO long-range plan, there it is again. So this has been planned for a really long time. If you look at all the companions going back, they talk about greenways, getting them built, we don't have any connected greenways that have been built.
Thank you.
And that, if I may finish, the 2013 comprehensive plan says, quote, "Fully implement the bicycle, pedestrian, and greenway plan that has been approved by city council." So I ask you to do that, thank you.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Tom Conneton, I've been a teacher at Greenbrier Elementary, an ESL teacher for over 14 years, and I've worked in the Hearthwood community that connects through the Ryvanna Trail to Greenbrier Elementary, and it would be huge, like, we've had a number of kids hit in the parking lot at Hearthwood, there's really no place for them to play or ride their bikes, other than riding around in a parking lot. It's also would be a huge thing for the parents to be able to walk to work. I've encountered parents having holding infant, trying to cross over the stream to get to a child's performance, our custodians have sometimes walking there, having to cross over in flood-stage waters to get safely to Greenbrier, so they would also connect to some workplaces over to the mall and provide a lot of connectivity for people who don't have cars, or perhaps are just on bicycles, it would. I've I've heard about this trail since I started working at Greenbrier in 2005, was really excited about it, the residents are excited. I have several signatures, the management included, that's very excited and totally behind the trail coming through Hearthwood, and I'm happy to present the signatures as well. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll be brief, I'm going to talk on the same subject of the Meadow Creek Stream Valley. My name's Joan Chapman, I live in the Greenbrier neighborhood, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I just see this as such a major connection for the whole city. I mean, we're talking about connecting Barracks Road Shopping Center, Fashion Square Mall, Hydraulic Road area, and everything in between. My husband's actually bushwhacked from our house to the bank on 29, and I could see where I could walk to Kroger's on hydraulic on this road, I mean, on this trail. So I I really do feel like it brings a lot of equity to the community, because, like they were saying, if you don't have a driver's license, or you don't have a car, this is a level way to get around town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jason Halbert, Fry Springs neighborhood. Two things, I'm very happy to see as a former person on the Board of the CRHA, former chair, I'm very happy to see the city increasing its commitment, getting everybody getting serious about redevelopment, that's wonderful, I've been watching from afar and applauding. I hope it comes to fruition. I'm here representing the Fry Springs Neighborhood Association, I'm on the Board, and I just want to say that I applaud the process that you all are trying to put in place to bring more transparency for the neighborhoods and the CIP process. I think you should solidify that, and it should be clear to everyone how to get stuff on the list, where it's on the list, and when it'll move up the list. So I would love, we have our squeaky wheel projects that we want done, right? But clearly, as an, I lived in Belmont for almost 20 years, 16 years, and Elliott is a serious problem, and I would put that ahead, you know, as a city resident of our projects. And the Greenbrier Trail is great, too, but if we don't know where these things are, and why they keep getting put off the list, and who's putting them off the list, it's just not fair to the neighborhoods, and people just scratch their head, they give up, and then the next people come forward and say, well, let's try again. And so every neighborhood's got their issues, we all support it, want to support each other, and I'm happy to stand in line behind some other projects, just so that I know that, yeah, eventually we're going to get to that, we know it's something that needs to be done. But as of right now, unless I misunderstand the process, we have no way of knowing, and I'd like to correct that.
My name is Said, I am from Hearthwood Apartment, and I just request from you, our children is playing in the, like, the parking lot, and we don't have, like, bus, bicycle, right? And sometime, our, like, our wives, and because we are all refugee living in Hearthwood Apartments, and all of them, like, eighty, ninety percent, like, women, they don't know English, and they don't have driving lessons, and sometimes they want to meet their children, and sometimes the children is miss the bus, and sometimes they go to exercise, you know, the ladies or our childrens, and we don't have, like, like, safe walk. If you go to Hydraulic Road, we don't have, like, sidewalk by by scales all around. We just request if you, like, make a trail, build a trail from Hearthwood to Greenbrier School, it should be help with our children and with ladies, because it's all hundred, like, if you come here, it's like 90% all refugee, and they, like, should be, it should be helpful with our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Emily Dreyfus, and I am an organizer with the Legal Aid Justice Center and on the advisory council for the Public Housing Association of Residents, and I'm part of the CRHA, the Housing Authorities Redevelopment Committee, and I wanted to thank you for your hard work and and moving us toward a more equitable community. I do have a concern about the top dollar amount, because I think that $15 million is an adequate amount for the next three years, I don't really think it's going to hit the mark for five years. And for the next three years, as our plans now stand, we aren't going to really be addressing the need for additional affordable housing, at least not in any significant enough way to start moving us toward that 3,300 gap that the needs assessment identified in the city. So I really hope that we can be more ambitious, more bold, or find some ways to put some other projects off or decrease some other commitments to go further. And I wanted to address a little bit of the issues that came up tonight around staff involvement, for one thing. We've had a wonderful asset in Brenda Kelly, who comes to all of our meetings and has really been helpful, and I'm sure people would be open to having additional city involvement if another counselor would like to be a member of the redevelopment committee. I believe there is one, but scheduling hasn't worked well. And it's really an all-hands-on-deck approach, and we're all putting a lot of time in, so we would love to have whatever kinds of help we might be able to have. The immediate needs at Crescent Halls are definitely the top priority, and that will be accomplished through rehab. The new housing at the South First Street Ball Field, I think, is likely to be the place for relocation housing, so that we can then free up units in order to rehab or redevelop in other sites. And then as far as sustainability is concerned, I think the HUD subsidies did decrease several years ago, but they've been pretty stable over the last several years. So I don't really remember what the era of decreases were, but I think in the last four to five years, we haven't seen big drops. So I don't think we're anticipating that HUD is going to knock the feet out, legs out from under us at all, and I I really think that HUD would have a hard time doing that, unlike Section 8 subsidies, which are a much less stable source of housing stability or housing assistance. I think public housing, because it's bricks and mortar, HUD is much more long-term committed to making sure that they don't see, you know, a terrible dismantling of their resources, or that they're not contributing to blight in communities. I know this was a deeper dive into CIP, but I just wanted to raise the issues of dealing with displacement and figuring out how we can increase the tax abatement program or the and the rental assistance program, so that more families are able to stay in their homes in the community. And I hope that you're willing to be a little more risk tolerant, or dig a little deeper, and figure out how to head upwards of $15 million for the five-year plan. Thank you.
I'm John Hall from 2427 Sunset Road in Fry Spring. I wanted to make a few comments about Stribbling Avenue. I've done an engineering study and drafted the entire length of half a mile of Stribbling Avenue, and determined that there's really a need of about 1,800, 1,800 linear feet of sidewalk needed, and I think we can make the road wider. I'd like to see us. I'd like to see us consider street scape and including the sidewalk, and we can get 32 feet, I think, along the entire length, to include 27 feet of street for two lanes, as well as a five-foot sidewalk on either side. And I would propose crossovers at strategic points. At 123 Stribbling Avenue, the home of William Abraham's son, who's head of the Stribbling Avenue Task Force, it narrows to only 18 feet, which is very narrow, and there's a hill right there that's very dangerous. There's probably 75% of the residents along Stribbling Avenue are students from UVA, and they're walking up and down that street. There's women with baby carriages, there's people riding bicycles, things like that. It's a very unsafe street. We really need to allocate some money. I know that there was $600,000 being considered. Alex Ikhafuna told me this. Alex and the city traffic engineer have agreed to meet with me. We want to do some planning. We'd like to see city council help implement some improvements. I know that there are many streets in Charlottesville that need to be looked at, and this is just one of them, but considering the danger and the possibility of making it both wider and improving the sidewalks is really what the owners of the houses have wanted, and I have canvassed every resident that is an owner, and they have signed a petition to have this study done, and I will-
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Joy Johnson, and I reside at 802 Hay Hard Drive, and I just wanted to kind of answer, try to answer some of the concern. Thank you Brenda too. Brenda is a good asset when we travel and when we're in the meetings. But to let you know that, I think residents are at the point where we really understand that market rate has got to be in all of our phase, but redevelopment is now in the future for us, and so there are some maintenance needs that are expensive, being that HUD have cut, kind of zeroed out the maintain, the capital funds. So, there is a, there is a parallel track that will be happening in our phase, different from Friendship Court, because we have to still fix up some of the units that is not going to be torn down or remodeled anytime soon, to also use those as relocation unit for some of the three bedrooms and stuff like that. So, West Haven is the last phase, if I can remember when we did the phasing out things, but the scattered site units will probably be rehab along with Crescent Halls and then being built some things. So, it's trying to fix up what we have and giving people some kind of hope that something new is coming, but to also build something new, so people can also see it. So, I think we had to, we had to, like, really work through that piece of it, because over the years, we've been blasted on Facebook, you all been blasted, FAFRA has been blasted, Legal Aid has been blasted, that we have not been taking care of Crescent Halls. And so, Crescent Halls is a high priority. This is why that the whole idea of building for senior units, and we could have been facing some fear housing thing there too, we just found that out, but building senior units that's on the ball field, that we could rehab and have it done in a much shorter frame, which is 18 months, providing we get the tax credit and everything go through, rather than two years down the road, even turning dirt or anything. So, that's one of the reasons why some of the details have shifted a little bit, because it was of the 18-month frame that we could give Crescent Halls some kind of relief just by rehabbing. And then the last thing that I want to say is that there should be a planner who is assigned to a segment of the city, and so I'm kind of saying they should be working with us. We did have a kind of a general meeting with folks in the planning department to see how we can work as a team, but when I left that meeting, I didn't feel like that was there. So, whatever we can do to make sure that we have some help, I would greatly, Brenda can't do it by herself, we need some other expertise in the room, teaching us, because this is new for all of us. I'm not like Kathy, I don't have all of that architectural background, I'm just kind of, I just only wanted to be a little resident association, and now I'm into development. And the last thing I wanted to say about Elliott is that that's a big concern for Ms. Oliver, who is also a resident commissioner on the Housing Authority Board, and she talks a lot about senior citizens who are walking from Hartsmill Roads with grocery all the way up the hill or down the hill to catch the bus across Elliott, and how dangerous that is. So I thank you all for bringing that, but please make sure you get in touch with Ms. Oliver, so that she be a part of that. So, that's just pretty much what I wanted to say. I don't know if it cleared it up for you all, and the reason we didn't do RAD is because it would take away residents' rights to be involved, and what I heard from HUD when we were in Chicago is that there has been some changes to it, and I have not looked at those yet. So who knows, maybe in another phase, we might look at it, but right now, we're saying no to RAD.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, thanks, meeting adjourned. All right.